Yep, it is three o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting order. And if you will give, uh, join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody that has a phone, please shut it to silence, so we don't have ringing phones in the middle of our meeting. I'd appreciate that. If you did want to address the board, there's sign up sheets in the back. And if you'll please give those to Mr. Schumaker. And with that, I will call the board. District of Hood, Anthem of Peers is here. Supervisor Tinkles, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Heinrich, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Flaherty, and our district chairman, Christian, our friends, with that, we have people that have signed up this week.
Three speakers, all them non-agenda items, and we'll start with Charles Shaffer, Hampton Park.
Hey, Charles Shaffer, Hampton Park. Uh, last several weeks, I've, uh, sent you all of his three emails concerning different subjects. Uh, one being a jockey pump, I'd like to start with that one. Uh, the jockey pump was, uh, you had to remove one of your high service pumps to place this jockey pump in there. So you originally started with five high service pumps, now you're down to four high service pumps and a jockey pump. My suggestion was to get a knowledgeable irrigation company out here to see if we can incorporate a jockey pump into the five. Replace that fifth high service pump, so you could get your 10,000 gallons a minute that you require. Because right now, you only got 8,000, 2,000 per high service pump. So if that, you could do that, then you still get your 10,000 gallons per minute. And I don't believe you would need to drill any more wells. Now, one of the problems you're having with your jockey pumps, uh, that's going on out here right now is you're on low pressure, 50 PSI from nine o'clock in the morning, yeah, nine o'clock in the morning until five o'clock. Right now, he's out here adjusting his sprinklers so that they don't spray onto the sidewalk. What happens after five o'clock, when your high service pumps come on? You're now increasing your pressure, and you're shooting that stream right onto the sidewalk again. So it doesn't do any good to adjust your sprinklers when you're at low pressure. It should be done during high pressure times. So if they could just click on the system to adjust their sprinklers first, then it would accomplish more. Because right now, you're defeating your purpose by adjusting them at low pressure. And then when the high pressure comes on, it's just overspraying everything anyways, and you're using low water. And the second thing I'd like to discuss is this overflow pipe. If there's been any consideration, as instead of putting in that $850,000 sprinkler system, if any consideration's been taken as far as installing the overflow pipe on the, uh, big tank back here, draining it directly into our lakes. Do you have that, um, option? Also, on your, um, irrigation system that you run along Gateway Boulevard there where you've been discharging your overflow. If you're worried about that system going down, uh, I don't know if you have it already, but you can put a transfer valve in there, uh, shifting that overflow to a different sprinkler system in case that one ever goes down. So you've got another option there, instead of this new irrigation system. And the third thing I discussed was the, um, irrigation system pressure report that Mr. Tyler gave. I don't think at this time, uh, his values were correct, maybe for when he took his pressures, but when he took the pressures, we were still under the, uh, Lee County Utility, uh, water restrictions, where everybody was watering Saturday, Sunday, Wednesday, Thursday. We're now spreading that out, hopefully to cover all seven days, which is gonna decrease your pressure or your demand for water and your peak times. So, in addition to that, not all the valves have been exercised at that time. Not only can you exercise my valve up there in Hampton Park, my water pressure increased significantly for my sprinklers. They were hitting the wind and it had a lot to turn them down. So, we've got great pressure up there now. So if you wait until all the valves are exercised, replace the ones that aren't working, and then retake your pressure readings again to see if you actually do have a pressure problem. You'd be much better off than going ahead with what you're doing now, as far as putting new water line in. Any questions?
No, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Shaffer, I've reread your memos, and I'm very impressed with, uh, your statement of fact and logic. Probably because I didn't know very much of that, which is the whole thing. But have you talked with Kenny Hall that, uh, works, works for, directly for us on these, uh, exact issues?
No, I haven't.
Would you mind doing that?
Absolutely.
Uh, because if, you know, if you two, uh, can agree on exactly what needs to be done, uh, I, I suspect the, this board's gonna be all in favor of it.
All right, I can do that.
Thank you very much.
Two, two, two issues. Two issues, uh, I sent Chuck an email response back. Uh, two issues that he's pointed out that I want to, uh, clarify. This board is the one who's adopted a rule for the sprinkling on two days a week. That's a rule that we adopted years ago. I don't know what the basis was at, at that time, I imagine it was because of a shortage of water, and Lee County, uh, put us in that position, but that rule has never been changed by this board. Second thing is, is that 10 years ago, when I first got involved with the, uh, CDD and coming to meetings, the first thing I did was go to South Florida Water Management District and bring up the obvious of what he said. Put in an overflow pipe to the lake in the wet season, and let all that million and a half gallon a day of water that we have to use by contract, let it go in the lakes. Categorically, categorically, hell will freeze before they let you do that. So white wastewater reuse cannot go into the flowway, period. That's why we need to have the discharge up in the FPLB's, because it cannot go in the flowway. Has to go on irrigated way.
Can I comment to that?
Uh, I think that the comment time is over.
Okay, I'll just give it to Kristen, because it's right here as a proof that you can use it.
Okay. Um, do you have, uh, another speaker?
Yes, I do. Joe Schofield, Pelican.
Joe Schofield, Pelican. I was gonna pass, but I decided not to. Uh, I attended a meeting the other day that, uh, our Ward Leader, Ward Six, Dale Anthony held. And, uh, there was about an hour spent on the Arborwood community that's being developed down on Tree Line in the area of, um, I think it's Garden Drive, Plantation Garden Drive, that's what it is. In any event, uh, the city is going to probably approve somewhere in the amount of 4,000 units and, uh, 400 or 2,000 multi, um, multifamily units. And there were a lot of questions for the residents that live further down there, and some from Pelican Preserve, about the traffic and the water, stormwater flow. And I'm not sure, I asked them where the water was going, and they had no idea. But my understanding is, there's basically one way for water to get out of here under 75.
They, they have their own box culvert. If you go off I-75 from Daniels, going north. As soon as you merge, if you look to the right, you will see a huge canal coming in. That's where their water goes straight over, it goes all the way across Plantation, Renaissance, and it ends up in the, by a series of types, ends up in the same six mile Cypress, right next to the.
Well, I figured I had to get the six mile Cypress, but Ed, you know more than they did.
Yeah, well, the other one is, if you go up, the reason I looked is because I had the same question, uh, from Arborwood. Where was all that water gonna go? So I've got their plans and saw it. If you go up Tree Line, just as you start make the curve, if you slow down, you can see the huge culvert that takes all of the Arborwood water and Plantation water across Tree Line, dumps it onto the west side of Tree Line, then it goes through a combination of lakes and pipes to the box culvert until you back goes into I-75.
Okay, very good. They weren't sure what was going on with the water, and I thought for the developer not to know what was happening, that's not good.
There is an exception now. Arborwood Phase Three, which is in the CDD, and in the county, not in the city, comes to us, and better yet, it comes to you all in Pelican Preserve. They're gonna put in two lakes there, those lakes are interconnected, and they tie into your lake over on the Sixth Hole and the Golf Course.
I bring it to your attention because it's gonna be an issue down the plate for water and traffic. And they're gonna be having two open meetings the city will be holding for, uh, comments. And I, I, I gave Chris a copy of what they passed out, there's 20 pages of, probably mostly boilerplate. I, I bring it to your attention, water flow may not be the issue that I thought it might be, but traffic certainly looks like it will be increased in this community for the, the Plantation Gardens Road, people cutting through. I come, came up again at Commerce and Gateway and got, it was amazing to watch the people just passing each other and trying to make the turn, and when we get more traffic, it's something to think about as you go forward. Thank you.
Unfortunately, the DRI for that development, that, that ink dried years ago.
2004, 2004, yeah. That's what the people are saying. When was the last study done on traffic? Well, 2004. But Saied said, no, it was based on a 20 expectations for 2025, I believe. And the guy said, yeah, I don't believe it's gonna be any good to. I just wanna bring it to your attention, I gave Chris a copy of this for your input, because I feel being prepared ahead of time is a lot better than getting stuck with stuff down the road.
Thank you. Remind?
Mr. Gepper.
Man, I thought this was mailed, apparently I didn't mail it to Diane, so I'm sorry. Bob Gepper, Pelican Preserve. A couple of meetings ago, the board asked, uh, if the Pelican Ponds Work Group would look at the scope of work for your next phase of lake bank replenishment. Uh, that task was accomplished, uh, last week. Uh, myself, Doug Xanter, um, Tyler Rainwright, and Supervisor Tinkles. And, uh, so I'm just passing this along to you, do with it what you will. We looked at the six ponds in question, and the attachment recommendations are here. I know you give me a chance to look at it later, I didn't expect we'd be discussing it this evening. But the task was accomplished.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Chairman, while we have Mr. Gepper upstairs. Bob, did you get my email about the, uh, Prestoria?
I didn't understand it, but I got it. Pardon?
That, that's one with regards to Lennar has agreed to install the yard drain facilities, correct?
Oh, oh, I thought you were talking about the Corinian.
No.
Okay, go back. Yeah, they have finally agreed.
They've agreed, and there was an exchange of emails between Mr. Russell Smith, Lennar WCI, and Bob Gepper with regards to, Lennar WCI agreeing to install that, and the district reimbursed the amount of 450. And so I, I think I'd like to have this board, uh, if you want to take public comment, ratify and confirm that agreement, so we can get a traction.
They had previously done that, the board had previously.
Right, but, but Mr. Smith made it sound like the agreement was between you and him.
Well, good, then I won't pay him.
I just wanted to make sure, that, that way, you know, Chris can write back and say, yeah, the board's reviewed it, and they've accepted and confirmed it. So, I, I would like to have the board do that.
I'd rather have to do the work now, we're gonna go to payment.
Let me open it up for public comment. Did anybody want to address this issue? Seeing none?
Your motion would be to ratify and confirm the arrangement between the district and Lennar WCI, where Lennar WCI will install yard drains in Prato and Prestoria, and the district would reimburse Lennar WCI $450 for each yard drain installed.
Out of the O-2 fund?
Yes.
Yes.
Just wanted that verification.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I'll make that motion, but Tony, you're gonna.
I'll prepare.
Yep, you'll prepare.
Yes, sir.
Want me to reiterate?
That the district ratifying confirmed the arrangement between Lennar WCI and the district, whereby Lennar WCI will install yard drains and properties in Prestoria, Prato and Prestoria, and the district would reimburse Lennar WCI the amount of $450 for each yard drain installed, coming out of fund of O-2.
$450?
Yes, it only applies to homes on ponds.
Yes.
It only applies to homes that are under construction too.
Well, yeah, we'd like that to do it all, but yes, you're right, though.
From construction on pond.
From that point forward. Uh, one other little aside on that, and I don't wanna run over my time. Uh, but in going out and reviewing some of the homes that they have built, they're not even meeting the current permit criteria manual. We had a home that had downspouts, and that's it, didn't make it anywhere. By permit criteria manual, they have to put it in the ground. So now that's gonna spur us to look even more at what they're doing.
Well, I don't have a second for that motion, or I?
I do not have a second yet.
I'll second.
Okay, good. Second. Any further discussion? No, I'm in this. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You got it, Bob.
Quick question for, for Bob and Tony. Looking through for getting ready for today's meeting, and having Tony get a list of things that I was trying to get a status on. One of them was the Area Nine, where we're at on that. So I go to LEPA, which is a source of ultimate information. And I was shocked to see that Area Nine, at least for the part from where our flowway crosses I-75 north to and including on one, 32, 30?
32.
32. It's shown as LEPA, or shown on LEPA as belonging to WCI. I thought we resolved that a couple of years ago, that we had taken a warranty deed on that. And as I understand it, apparently we have an issue on that.
No, we have an easement, we don't have a warranty deed yet, and.
Apparently we haven't, but we, it's, it's, it's setting on us, it's in our, our court authority to, well.
I agree. And what, in the, I'm gonna have a more detailed memo probably for the first meeting in December. Uh, alternatives opposed to doing the domain, maybe doing quiet title lawsuits, but we would need also a resolution approved by the City of Fort Myers.
For the access.
For the domain for access.
For the whole thing, okay. Well, then the second thing got, that led me to go on is as I crossed I-75. And lo and behold, WCI, Lennar's name pops up again, and much to my surprise, it was the flowway. Flowway one and flowway two still belong to WCI. How, that was, that was, we only have an easement for that?
We, we have, there's more than enough for it, yes.
Because all the rest of it is shown on LEPA's GSCDD? Is there a difference?
Well, with the, with ownership, you can have trespass issues, but you have the right to have the facility there with the easement.
Okay, so we have an easement.
The requisite interest in the flowway.
Okay, we have an easement on a part of the flowway, and we have deeds on the other portions.
Upstream.
I just wanna make sure that we were covered on that. That was a surprise. I thought we owned it all the way to 75.
You know that strap number?
Strap number? Did you look up? Just hit it on LEPA and went to the picture and clicked on it.
Did you have another comment?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, Mr. Gepper said with regards to if work is underway, and activity is taking place in Pelican Preserve, contrary to the plans and specifications of the approval provided by the district, and contrary to the permit criteria manual, I suggested Chris give it Bob and, and Tyler to send the demand level to Lennar WCI.
Is this being done by subs and sub-subs, or is it being done by the prime? To me, that makes it, I, I know that doesn't mean anything, but to me, it means a lot. Because a lot of times, you get these subs, they couldn't care less. They, they don't care about rules. But is the work that's being violated, is it the ones that know better, i.e. the, the developer, Lennar?
It's all the developer.
Or is it his subs?
It's all the developer.
Uh, that's not good. That's not good.
Yeah, I had a resident calling me out for his own, because he's made three complaints to, um, Lennar's customer service to get his downspouts buried, which is part of our cri- cri- criteria manual. And they're not buried.
We, we just continue to dance around with them. I think it's time to fire a shot over the valve. Send them a nasty letter, and talk about, we can't find them.
I guess what we need to do is grab, do an audit.
What is our deal, what they just snub us.
There might be.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, there might be, I'm not sure what bond amount was posted, and what infrastructure is covered, that was covered as part of it or not. At the end of the day, if we call them, if it's part of the infrastructure body posted for the favor of the district.
That's ridiculous.
Bob, you'll give with Mr. Schumaker.
Absolutely.
Okay, then, we are to staff reports.
Yeah, I'll just go over this, the items we're on there briefly, and I had a couple that had, I met with Jimmy Lynn today to discuss, uh, potential ways to, uh, get some of the wells going through the irrigation system. I'm doing a little research and I'll look back to you. I had a nice conversation with them today. I met with the residents, laid out a couple of bocce ball courts, they just provided some other information. So we'll go get some bids on how much it costs to install a bocce ball court, but it won't be a thousand dollars, like they said.
Were you, when you were over at the club, did you see the new bocce court the club put in?
No.
They put in two new bocce and two new pickleball.
I was gonna find out who did those ones.
I've got all that information. And that's where I got my cost information of $250,000 to $300,000. It's not cheap at all.
That's clay?
I'm sorry?
That's clay, synthetic.
They're using the tennis clay as opposed to the, uh, uh, grass, which the grass is a maintenance nightmare. They went the cheap route.
We talked about Astro-Turf for the cheap route, maintenance route, and they were fine with that.
Well, I know when we had our bocce court completely redone in Stony Brook, it didn't cost anywhere near that. So I will find out who, they completely took out the old one and restored it, could build a new one. We didn't spend nearly that much, so I'll find out who did that work.
I also talked briefly last time about the assessments and the conductivity issue, and Russ Wire, I've spoken to him with that, and at our workshop on the 15th, Russ will also be in attendance, and we'll address some of those issues and discuss them in a little more detail. Had a brief meeting with the school board to talk about, uh, updates and more on utility services specifically. Uh, they did mention that, uh, Pass Hampton will plan to put in a roundabout, uh, with a through lane on it, because there's no way they're gonna let them have a light there, because it's too close to 82 and back in traffic up. They also put in a request really due to the water management district making them examine the use of reclaimed water. Their original plan was to use their ponds for irrigation. Um, they're looking at that, and told us, uh, when they were going to have the, uh, field establishment, they would like 160,000 gallons of water a day.
Reuse?
Yes. And I spoke with Danny, and they're, um, working on just adding that demand to the model they recently finished to see how that would impact our system.
Is that a 24-hour day, 16-hour day, eight-hour day?
Um, I don't know on the time, but it's, uh, that is their initial use for 30 days for establishing the fields.
Wow.
Because if you take that down to an eight-hour day, you're talking about pretty nice sized GPM.
Oh, yeah.
If you're talking a 24-hour day, then it's reasonable. So we need to know that number.
Would that give us some relief?
And that just hurts us more.
Hurts us more.
Yeah.
July season.
It depends on when, when they're, when, you know, when they're breaking ground, and that first initial six months, I guess for, to, to grow and mature those fields.
Summertime's not an issue, wintertime, little tins.
I mean, if it aligns, it would be a nice thing to have.
Yes, we're looking at the impacts on the hydraulic unit model and where we are with our.
That's the biggest issue I think we'd have is the model.
Did, did they give you a proposed groundbreaking?
No.
And, uh, just remind the board when Russ is gonna present his findings.
Um, he will present the findings on the methodology study, he is looking at, uh, March of 2019.
Okay, just wanted to bring that.
And also the school, uh, made a request too, to sign off on a permit for de-watering and discharging, um, de-watering fluid into our stormwater system. And, uh, he had through Hampton Park, and they have, uh, some, the same thing ran out by Danny. He brought some criteria out, and they also included some things like daily testing, testing for turbidity, water quality, that type of thing. And, uh, we're ironing out some of those details, but I'm gonna bring it to the board on the 15th.
Do you say a rate?
No. They just, they just don't think they're gonna be able to handle all the water on site because of the amount, so they're gonna have ponds for the de-water, but they're gonna have access. So they're working on that permit application right now. I just told them it wasn't gonna be a standard sign off, that'd get a lot of people concerned about that. We didn't want to end up with cloudy stormwater ponds over in Hampton Park.
Absolutely.
So, and Comcast has still been active out in Stony Brook.
Oh, yes.
Hit our irrigation line in three different places where they've had to pull the sidewalk panels up, to repair and replace them, and we'll be making an additional claim. And our first claim is still being examined by their liability people and insurance company, I spoke with them today.
They love the way you put that.
They hit two irrigation lines just on my property.
So, and, uh, that's, that's all I have, I'll pick up after Kenny with a few of the public works items.
Good afternoon, the utility manager. Uh, we did our, uh, annual Department of Health, uh, inspection report. Uh, we came out with, uh, the health department, oh, passed, no problem, uh, no deficiencies noted at all. Our Thompson bypass pumps, uh, it'll cost, uh, $50,000, $55,000 for a unit. Uh, they're, the mobile unit with the, uh, had a ship date of 10 to 12 weeks. Uh, February 2nd is the, when the actual notice was received. So we're looking at it about 16 weeks, we should have two mobile bypass units, uh, Thompson pumps now with, and then we'll have a, uh, fixed one at Stony Brook Management Station, that is on the. And that's all I, I have. And as far as the, uh, I wanted to comment on the, uh, the jockey pump of the irrigation. Uh, one of the biggest reasons why we run a 55 PSI during the day, because there's no demand. Uh, our high service pumps, when we installed that jockey pump, we are on an old hydro pneumatic system. I'm sure you, you've seen it. Uh, we cut away from that and installed a jockey. Uh, and the reason when we cut away from that, uh, those high service pumps cannot run that level. And there's no demand from about 8:30 until about 4, 5 o'clock. There's no demand. Those pumps will just sit there and run, run, and run, they're, they, to run a high service pump, 150 horsepower high, high service pump, uh, with no water going out, uh, is extremely expensive. Uh, and they feature equipment up unnecessarily, so that when they cut away from that hydro pneumatic tank and put the jockey pump in there, the jockey pump can run real low, and it can make up that difference, and the jockey pump is super high efficient. It'll oscillate, it'll go with the flows. Uh, when the demand starts to pick up, the jockey pump will just kinda ride up with it. For the high service pumps, they really have a hard time at low, at real low flow rates to do that. Uh, it really puts a beating on them. So one of the, when you cut away from that hydro pneumatic tank, you're stuck with that jockey pump. And that jockey pump runs twice as much as any of the other pumps. Uh, that jockey pump will run from about, it comes on at about 8:00 AM, and it'll run anywhere until from 9 o'clock until about 10 o'clock, when the flows get really high, and the high service pumps will kick on and take care of it until when the demand kicks off. But that is why they, the biggest reason why we don't run those, uh, during the day is because there's no demand. When we shut the system down, within about half an hour, we'll have about three or four phone calls from residents, who's more than likely they're having their landscaper come out there to fix their irrigation system, and that's, excuse me, that's when the landscapers are available. So when we shut it down, we'll get, depending on how long it is, people will have their landscapers out there adjusting their, their sprinkler system. So, from 9:00 to 5:00, on Lee County's rule, there's no watering at all. So, and when the high service pumps, and we're at 75 PSI, uh, on the common areas, usually it's at night. So there's not too awful many people out there past midnight when those things are going. I know they're going during the day, but with it being a lower pressure, that, it won't even register on our flow. Those, you need a lot of real high demand, you know, hundreds of users going on. Five or six people watering, or 100 people, really does not show up, it's not, it's really not that much. But that jockey pump is, that's why we, is what, we run that so low.
So Kenny, to your point, and, and Charles called this up too, if you're trying to calibrate your sprinklers, um, and you're doing that, let's say during the day versus in the afternoon or whenever, um, there's increased pressure, that could, that could impact what your spray is. So, and I don't know, I mean, I've never really thought about that, and I don't know how many residents do as well.
That's mainscape's job.
Um, if there's no, well, I'm, I'm.
Mainscape controls our irrigation system, so if there's any heads that are out there that are shooting in and wanting to water the blacktop, they should be reevaluating that, again, what he said, at the right time.
It's all on the flows.
But I would just bet you, the guys that are doing that, that's, hasn't even entered their mind.
Yeah, well, so, we need to be calibrating during, during, during the right times, and we probably need to be auditing that every solv. Yeah, well, so we need to be calibrating during, during the right times and we probably need to be auditing that every so often. But does that also impact the residents? Is that same, that same methodology? Yeah, the individual homeowners, does that same thing hold true?
Well, when you have three thousand people come on at one time, which is set at midnight, you have all that demand, yeah.
Well, my point is, if, if residents are calibrating those sprinklers, you know, during the weekday or one of those times where the, where the pressure might be lower, when in actuality, when they're watering times at two in the morning or whatever, they've got higher pressure. So they're either watering the streets or they're spraying their car or, you know, they're doing those things. So it might just be two things. One, make sure that mainscape is calibrating under real world conditions and they're auditing that regularly. And two, we might want to put something in the, in the bill to, or figure out some way to notify the residents that the best time to calibrate your irrigation is during, you know, this time when it's a more true...
Two o'clock in the morning.
But, you know, if there is a better time to do that, that's, you know, because...
Double time for your landscape.
But it's, at two o'clock in the morning, there's about, you know, that could be anywhere from two thousand to three thousand years ago. So I think that's gonna impact a great deal.
Well, I know I'm not saying calibrate at two in the morning, but if you're, if you're doing it during the day versus even in the, in the afternoon or evening, you could, I would imagine you have some, some variation in your water pressure which could impact your spray and how you adjust your irrigation. So we may just wanna, you know, get something out at some point.
If you don't mind, I can help Kenny out and answer that question a little bit to try to explain it better. So during the day, there's no demand on the system, so there's a static pressure of about fifty PSI. At night, you start off at seventy-five, but because everyone else around you is watering, you're still really gonna receive about the same pressure of about fifty to fifty-five. Just because at night they ramp up the pressure out there, doesn't mean...
It levels off.
Right. Doesn't mean you actually receive it at your sprinkler head. So there are differences a little bit, but it's, it's not thirty PSI automatically. When there's demand around you, you know, your neighbor's watering, everyone on that street is watering, your pressure that you're receiving is probably pretty close to about fifty to fifty-five. So there's not, there's a difference, but it's not a huge difference.
Thank you. Finished?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one, I have one more thing regarding irrigation. I've heard still continuing complaints about when, when we're watering, especially sidewalks and some of the residential areas. So can we just maybe make sure we're keeping a check on when we're spraying? I know there was a complaint actually in Stony Brook and I continuously hear it on Gateway Boulevard. People, especially like in the evenings, and I've even seen it in the mornings sometimes. And I, I don't know what our schedule is, but I just wanna bring to your attention that we need to make sure we're not watering when we've got residents out using sidewalks.
Mrs. Flair, the bus stop was one of them?
Oh, yeah.
And I did address that and they shut off the irrigation before that bus stop. Okay, and they were supposed to change the times along Gateway because people were walking. Because it was flooding. I addressed that on Tuesday. So you know that.
So we got, some kids got sprayed at the bus stop in the morning before they went to school, which wasn't, wasn't good.
So it's now off there and they were supposed to change the times Tuesday on Gateway. Also, they were, when we were on Stony Brook today, there were, there were some heads because it was ten o'clock in the morning. And Freddie was out there adjusting some of them because they were spraying on the street, so. Just so you know. Did you have a question for Kenny?
Yeah, similar, for Kenny and Chris. The Villas easement issue is coming back up again. They...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Wait, please.
The Villas easement, if you recall, maybe three years ago, we talked about this is where the original developer squeezed in some lots and so consequently they couldn't meet the district's fifteen foot requirement for storm sewer easements.
Which Villas we own?
The Villas in Gateway Greens.
Okay.
And we prepared twenty-three easements for them. Basically twelve foot was the minimum, fifteen inch, eighteen inch, twenty-four inch diameter pipe. Well, anyway, they're back and active. We had a meeting here, what was that, Chris?
Tuesday.
Tuesday? I don't remember the day. Monday, Monday, Monday night. And I think they're going to get the people to sign. But the next morning Kenny and the crew and I met out there and we discovered six manholes that were buried anywhere from twelve to almost thirty inches. Catchpases, inlets, buried in dirt that need to be raised. So I think what we're doing is trying to get a contractor to get a price to get that work done. So that might alleviate a little bit of the flooding that's in, in the community out there. It'll also give the community access that they can come in and put in yard drains and put a saddle on the pipe. Some of these were no more than six inches. They put in yard drains more like a fridge drain and the water wouldn't connect it then. And then they could figure out why it didn't work. Six inches, all they do is they could tap the pipe and all the problems would be solved. But the problem that we ran into that was very disturbing was we've got the new TV camera out there. We couldn't even hardly get the TV camera in the pipes. They were so clogged. Just absolutely clogged. The storm sewer cleaning has to proceed. It's, it's dangerous. This was a forty-two inch line that serves main Gateway Greens Drive and we couldn't even get the TV camera in. It was that bad. You could see debris everywhere. So we need to be talking about where...
It sounds like construction debris. Would that be correct?
Yes. A lot of it's Irma. A lot of it's Irma. It's just these drainage inlets have never been cleaned in thirty years. That's the problem. They just haven't been cleaned. And we've gotta do something to get out there and get these. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year ain't gonna get it. It'll take six years to get to these things. We need to be talking about either a bank loan for five years and going out and getting those done, or we tap that reserve and get this work done. But we can't wait. After seeing that there on that forty-two inch pipe, that's, that's scary. So want to see something, maybe Chris would get with Steve Blum and see what he can do in the way of talking to a bank and what arrangements we could get to finance that and get that project started.
Is that out of scope for, for what we had?
Well, what we had originally talked about was about two point three, two point four billion dollars. We spent and we had budgeted...
No, I'm sorry, just for, for Gateway Greens?
Gateway Greens South, we've got budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which we're working on that project right now. And I think it came in, what was it, Chris, two hundred and some thousand dollars? But that's, that's twenty eighteen money. The twenty nineteen money, we have another three hundred and fifty thousand and Chris has given to, I think, give it to everybody?
Yeah.
That exhibit. Those are the projects that he's anticipating using to do the three fifty this year. But this doesn't anywhere near get all the work that needs to be done.
It was, was the area you're talking about, was it not surveyed when we?
Yeah, it's on our list. It just was not included in the, the first project. We only did Gateway Greens South. We didn't do Gateway Greens North.
Well, you gave us that list of issue where you had determined that there were issues?
Yes.
And I don't remember this particular area you're talking about being on there.
Yeah. It, it's one of the ones that was fifty percent or more flooded. Four years, four years ago. That's the thing we've gotta remember. That's a long time ago. And they're, they're bad. But we need to be looking at something in the way of a plan of how we're going to finance these deals. We can't wait five years at three fifty a click or six years at three fifty a click to get these sewers cleaned. It's, it's just, it's dangerous. The other one, when you all read it, and I know what he said, or at least I'm guessing I know what he said. Bob wrote this report and, because I heard it once, I heard it ten times in our trip around. Litorals, 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 litorals. I, I'd like to put this to bed. First of all, we have pond standards here that separate out what we are going to do and what we have approved to do relative to the litoral issue. But the biggest problem we have is years ago, we did ponds one oh six, one oh seven, and one oh eight. We have gone back since and had another contractor that fixed the experimental work on one oh six. Those are all and all been done on three sides. The agreement was that we were going to put litorals on the fourth side of those three ponds to get a track record and to have something to show the community what this looked like. So as an attempt to be able to do what Bob has been saying, that he's had a better chance or an easier way to sell it over there in your community than over here. Maybe they come from a different part of the country. The Midwesterners, they don't like the weeds. But anyway, the issue is, we have kicked this can down the road again. Let's get staff to get a vendor in here, get us a price to putting litorals on those last two hundred and twenty feet of each of those three ponds, six hundred and sixty feet, three abreast, which would be what, eighteen hundred and eighty plants that we need to put in out there? Let's get them in, get those banks and show the residents what this is going to look like to have a chance of going to sell them, putting in litorals to knock the cost down on doing this late bank work. Because you've only got two choices. And one of them is flaky to begin with. Putting in litorals with our ponds and with our carp and with our crappy soil, you can't... If you could get those things in and get them stabilized quickly and hold the bank, great. Our problem is, you can't, you can't do it that fast. They won't grow that fast. So...
Well, also you've got the fluctuation of water level. They die.
That's another problem we've got. But my deal is, let's experiment with what we said we were gonna do, one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight, and get them done. And let's see if we can actually put litorals in and accomplish what we're trying to do so as to save money going forward and avoiding all the stone, all the rock, all the armor mats, all the filter fabric and all the other things that are associated with it. Because when you read the stuff that Bob's gonna say, I am positive that is his message, you. The only way you're gonna cut the cost is that if you can do litorals. And I, I think we still have some issues with litorals, but the best way of doing it is let's do a demo. And those three ponds, we said we were gonna do it years ago, we never did. We just dropped them all.
A minute, a minute, Ben Shepard, may I?
Yes.
My recollection's a little different than yours. My recollection is that there were residents at those ponds that didn't want the litorals in their backyard.
We're not putting them on the backyard bill. We're putting them on the golf course side on all three ponds. That's the difference. You're right. The residents did not want the litorals. We agreed to put the litorals on the golf course side.
And I thought only one of those ponds actually was on the golf course. They all pre...
I'll agree. I'll agree. I'll agree about the golf course.
Before we ask Mr. Blum to look into anything, I thought we would have that workshop next time around. He's gonna discuss all this and what way we would go with it. That's my, my impression.
Well, my, my point is, we've got to accelerate this. We've got to accelerate this. The next item is, Chris, are you going to bring the fairway, the flowway improvements project at all? And any further discussion today or we bring it up now? I, I think the big one on that, we've had some emails going back and forth. Chris had asked me to review the plans. And I think we've got around the issue, or I hope we've got around the issue. Those plans need to be prepared by a professional engineer. Are, are we getting, what's the agreement we have, I guess, that we have signed for doing those plans for the, the three flowways?
We, we came into the board in July and Chris Hagan made a presentation on the status of the flowways and that included preliminary cost estimates. So the next step we took was to put the bid specifications together for those. And that's what we're working on now.
Well, my point is, is that ORCO is, are they an engineering, professional engineering firm?
They're certified and licensed.
They're certified and licensed engineer, okay, because there were no stamps on the plans.
Those are just draft plans.
Okay, okay. Never seen anybody do that. The second thing is, is that, that we talked about is that we need to have...